Good evening, everyone. Call the board of the regular meeting for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four at six thirty P M. Stand for pledge allegiance pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Good night. Except any motions for approval or amend of our agenda? We have one, actually two.
Do we want to change the order as requested?
Um, I'm not going to do that today since we didn't have completely swift house, but these guys are waiting, so.
Yeah, can we do that first?
Yeah, they're gonna be fine. I would be through that. We'll be just nothing.
Oh, was that?
Seven percent. Yeah, I got you. No, we there's um no tax refund for your reporters. Comment, let's see if we had something. And of course, funds to um the only thing I had was ten five. Our W right away for that issue brand now to market board. I put that in there most so take that out. It's very important except that we have our approval. If you had started it, we've been we can talk about that later, so. Uh, good to have you there. Um. That's all I have is to take ten five out. There is no particularly new business since we decided to put H R A here as a whole business. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Do I do that? Um, need to reform either the resolution that was made.
The law.
Or my motion was making uh regarding primary buildings.
That's all this is.
Yeah, we all have that. It's kind of
Is it is election day over?
Yeah, yeah, we're just gonna mind we're gonna actually make a motion. Uh town hall on election day motion made G seven twenty sixteen. Such as a whole business. Yeah. Now, it's a attempt by always preparing.
Okay.
Okay. It's motion made. So this is two things. You go. Maybe even for that.
Make a motion to amend the agenda as discussed.
Okay, second. Great. Well, favorite. Any more discussion? Nope. All favorite.
Hi.
Okay. Yeah, um, Jane is amended. Um, as I said, um, approval of minutes for the July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four regular board selection meeting and the August twentieth, twenty twenty four special for the selection meeting.
I have I have one correction on the August twentieth minutes um under the performance. The longevity portion, it's four, it's not four to ten, it was five to ten years from the first category. And I suggestion was corrections. Can you, when you put them into the the minutes, can you reference the section? Because like the June twenty six one that you have and I was like, what the heck is she talking about? If you could just reference the section of the of the minutes, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um. Go ahead. If there's no on July twenty fourth, we'll go ahead and make a motion except those minutes.
Uh, some.
Okay.
Okay.
On favor.
Hi.
Alright, okay, then the August twenty twenty four special word selection um meeting will um modify those to to um with longevity at five to ten years instead of four to ten years. Motion is just that. Okay. Okay. Okay, my on favor.
Hi.
Okay. Um, great, thank you. Um, I had no full correspondence. Um. Comment on agenda items. Anyone care to make a public comment on our agenda items for this evening? Hearing that, we'll move on to number seven, which tax refund. We have nothing for the treasurer. Um, or excuse me, from the tax collector and number eight, treasurer report. The only thing that we noted um was we did get, I know in the last weeks of board of finance, we said we did not get anything on the medic for. Were you see that? Yesterday, actually. Still working on source stuff and we're gonna talk about that and um let me give you a few of the things coming up.
Is there a treasure trip or because there was nothing in the shared folder?
No, I don't have a report tonight. I've been busy doing audit work.
It's just audit work yesterday, but we were just gonna submit the one from the board of finance last week as the update to that report.
Well, that was basically budget transfer, so I didn't.
Well, there was some okay.
Yeah.
The only, okay. Questions. So there is one we will talk.
I I wasn't able to attend the meeting and there was no, unfortunately, they don't use shared folders, so it's like impossible to know what the documents were.
Right, the transfer, yeah. There were a couple of items. Yeah, a couple of items you put in there. I thought we'd have that in there. I meant to make sure that it got in, but look at that to you. Um, it's not kind of worth except that we did receive, oh, there's that. We did receive the um uh like said, medic for uh update for twenty twenty three, but there's a lot more. It's going on.
Is there, I know this is off topic, but is there any way we can ask the board of finance to follow the same procedure? I brought it up as per just me personally, but is there any way we can do that? Is it barely the one?
You can request that. No, no, don't put anything.
There's nothing in the question that's not.
Yeah, that's right. It's all papers.
Yeah, they won't use share folder.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll go ahead and
Awesome.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll do that. Okay. All right, new business. Are there any other questions about the treasury part? New business, not old business. Okay, we want the approval of the resolution, authorizing participation in deep sustainable materials management grant.
I was confused by this because it the resolution is signed by the town clerk. So don't we have to make a resolution or we make a motion?
Right. Approve this resolution.
We have to do the exact same thing.
So you should make a motion to waive the reading of that resolution because you don't want to read that whole thing into the record. And then you'll make a motion to approve the resolution as read into the record.
Do you have questions about?
And then you'll need to sign that you made that motion to move forward to send off the H R A.
Yeah, and we H R A can talk to to this. What we had to do. So, um. Make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution. Authorize participation, departmental protection, single materials management grant, the full thing is in the record. All right, um. So we vote since it's now discussion. You want anything about the resolution?
We can like um make
Different situation.
No, it's all comfortable. This is just an instrument that Connecticut deep requires. That acknowledges that the town knows that H R A is acting on behalf of the town in executing all documents and requirements for the grant.
My only question was, did they give us less than we'd hoped for? Or is twenty nine, whatever it was, twenty nine thou?
Now, the original, the original grant was for um fifty five four. And we had the option. Um, we submitted our plan for permanency to ask for additional funds. So we're getting an additional twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to use going into this next year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, we decided to do it. We decided to continue as the following, implement it full time with that grant to help us do this next year. I think it was about the amount of money we could add from, correct?
Yes.
So, okay. Okay. Any other questions on the resolutions? Right? Um, on favor then of the resolution. That's right.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry, I'm sure.
Somebody. I'll make, I'll make a motion.
You made the uh
Did we already?
To accept the the uh
Um, to accept the resolution.
Resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Yeah, except the red, the way you
You're in the death part, right? Thank you.
Any other questions? On favor?
Hi.
Right? Thank you. Now I'm here from H R A train frustration update. Turn it over to our C major people. Thank them for coming up on it like this. Yeah.
Only a quarter of the screen. Let's see if you can see the presentation. Okay. Um, so I'm really excited to be able to present to you an update on the transfer station safety for a program. I have some additional slides in here that I'm not going to actually read or go through. It's just more for the record, for the public. Um, often people say I didn't know or I don't understand, and I added some additional slides. Um, so let's dive into this. Let's see if I can get my computer to work. Make the same. One, two, three, four. Okay, now we're 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 getting all over the place now. Alright, all these at once. Okay, so um this is reminder of the scope of work. Um, and it sort of addresses Lynn some of your questions you just had. So the town of Kent was awarded fifty five thousand one hundred dollars to pilot this waste reduction initiative. Um, the language there is captured from the actual awarded grant. The budget is uh outlined here that uh total fifty five thousand four hundred. There was fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars of funds that were not used as part of the original budget. Um, some of the reasons where we just, we felt that we didn't need some of the um like the general program management fees because we didn't need that consulting from Way Zero. So we were actually able to carry over that fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars into the implementation of the permanent program. In addition, we requested that twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars as bridge funding to help us in the implementation. Um, so combined together, it's about forty thousand dollars of support funding into the permanent program. Um, this is just a quick slide to remind folks why did we do this? Why did we enter into it? Has a lot to do with the waste crisis in the state of Connecticut. We produce three and a million, three and a half million tons of waste a year, and we only have capacity for two point seven million tons. And it's important for us to address this waste crisis and to look at the cost or what the the cost of the towns are when we're looking at per ton. Uh, it's over a hundred dollars a ton and by uh twenty twenty nine will be over a hundred and nine dollars a ton. And there are other parts of the state who are already paying a hundred and thirty at two hundred and forty dollars a ton. So we want to get ahead of that, so you're not impacted by that negatively and reducing our waste that we're generating. I'm not going to go through this slide. This is for the record. Um, a lot of people ask what's the difference between M S W and bulky? Why do we separate it out at the transfer station? Why should there be fees? Um, this is a reference document for people to understand the difference between bulky M S W and M S W. Because they ultimately do end up going to the waste energy. And I'm happy to answer questions at the end if someone wants me to deep go deeper into something. I think it's really important for the public and the town to always recognize that your transfer station is an important service that we provide to the public. That everyone should have access and uh no one should be able to feel like they can't afford to dispose of their solid waste. Each one of us generates solid waste um that it, but at the same time that we all should be responsible for what we generate. This is just a quick thing to remember, remind everyone that we do produce thirty two percent of our waste stream is organics. And this is part of the project that we initiated was addressing the this and how it helps uh address the waste risks. Now we get to get into the fun stuff for the town of Kent. So this is some of the really awesome results from the program. The blue lines are the twenty three, twenty four pilot year of um how much material have you collected versus um I mean of organic, sorry, I'm skipping ahead of myself on M S W. This is the food scraps that you collected. This is amazing that the town of Kent collected nearly fifty thousand pounds of food scraps, almost twenty five tons of food scraps in twenty twenty three. And just in these two months of permanent planning, you've collected nearly six tons of food scraps. You can see in the orange line how much you've you've increased the collection of organics only compared to last year when we started the pilot. Well done. Now, this is the other big, this is the M S W. So the blue line is pre-pilot before there ever was a pilot in twenty two, twenty three. And everyone was just throwing away as much garbage as they want. All of those lines are higher than the orange uh columns, which is the pilot year. And then in the two months of the permanent program, we've already seen another reduction. So significant reduction of solid waste from this program. So we're proven that a save as you throw program can change behavior. Uh, shows that you uh reduced your municipal solid waste by nearly forty nine tons in the pilot year. I'm going to assume that you're going to increase that even beyond that in this permanent year. Here's the revenue. We came to you back in May and said, hey, we think based on the data from the past, you're going to bring in and we implement this program about seventy five thousand, seventy five thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars in revenue in this permanent program. We're already at seventy three, almost seventy four thousand. Um, and if you had, we had estimated six hundred and seventy permates. Today you're at six hundred and seventy nine. And it's important to note that two hundred and sixty one of those permits sold were sold without purchases bags because we assume those folks had bags left over from the pilot year and they didn't need to buy them. But eventually this year, they're going to need to buy them. So that revenue that were short between the seventy six and the seventy four, you're going to meet that revenue. With the bridge funding, you're going to be in a healthy position in this permanent year. You'll also have very good data to be able to determine by January and February how to move forward into your second permanent year and how how much uh you need to budget to purchase bags for. And if there's additional money that's coming in to use that money for pre-purchase of bags. But this is all showing a very healthy trend. This is um to kind of highlight the expenses and to show the reduction. So in the twenty twenty two, twenty three pre-pilot, you had just short of four hundred tons of M S W that went through your system at a rate of ninety nine, thirty nine. Every year, July first, your tip fee increases a dollar fifty six a year. So despite the fact that the fee went up each year, you still saw a reduction in in cost. So in the in the year of the pilot, twenty three, twenty four, you reduced your M S W by three hundred and forty eight dollars, I mean three hundred and forty eight tons. And the tip fee increased, but you still had your disposal cost for thirty five thousand. So you you reduced it by four thousand uh dollars. Now, I then I compared it just these two months, July and August, pre-pilot, pilot and permanent year. And you can see you had an eight percent reduction from your pilot year to the first year. You had a thirty percent reduction from this year to last year pilot year. And if you compare this two months to the pre-pilot, it's a forty five percent reduction in M S W. So well done. Um, and again, just pointing out that um this is even with the increased tip fees. I'm going to say with this, you're on a trend to at least save twelve thousand dollars this year in disposal costs for M S W. It may even be more as the year go, as the trends, because every month uh you're, as you can see from the other history, it goes up and down, up and down. It's it's a seasonal trend. Christmas time you have more and other times you have less. Spring cleaning, you have more, but you'll want to throw away less. Alright, so this was just um data point for people to look at later. This is what the region looks like. And you can see with the region, we also as a region go up and down in our touch. This is a reference point for folks to look at in the H R region. These are all the H R towns. Where does Kent compare to in the other towns? So you've implemented an orange bag system, pay as you throw or save as you throw system, and you're charging a dollar twenty five per bag. Compared to the other but other municipalities, you have a very fair and reasonable rate. Um, other towns do charge a permit. They might be a little bit less, but their trash bags per bag are much higher. Like, look at Danbury, it's three dollars for thirteen gallon, where you're at a dollar twenty five. And other towns like New Milford charge a twenty five dollar annual permit. And their bag fee is double at two fifty. So I think you have a very fair rate that can be reevaluated in January, looking at, okay, how much revenue did we bring in? Should we adjust it? Likely you might even be able to adjust it even more, lower, um, if you're on trend. But you'll have to reevaluate that based on your operating cost. And and if you keep it the same, you're you're not being unfair to your residents. You're right on target compared to many other municipalities. This is just a sort of a nice visual to show like prior to the the pilot, every resident was paying the same. And no matter how many bags of trash you brought in or how often you brought in trash, everyone paid the same amount. And I always love this slide to sort of give a reality check that your electric bill is unit base pricing. It is a save as you use program to some extent. And um I've been sort of using this slide in some of my other presentations, particularly with this whole uproar of Eversource. And everyone's paying other people's electric bill and they're they're repulsed by that. Like, why am I paying this everyone else's electric bill? Well, it's not any different with garbage. And so this is where I hope people remember like, okay, this is a fair program that we're doing in Kent, Kent. Um, I shouldn't be paying for my neighbor's electricity. I shouldn't be paying for my neighbor's garbage. And so the next slide shows you the same feet people and what they're paying this year based on um the current rates. So the average person bringing in two bags a week with the permit permit fee is a hundred and eighty dollars. The person who's bringing in one bag has saved money and they're paying a hundred and fifteen dollars with their permit fee. Someone who's bringing in three bags more is paying two hundred and forty five dollars or more. And someone on maybe a smaller family or a single person, maybe only co- once every other week with one bag is paying eighty two dollars. So they're almost saving half of what they were paying before. It's the same amount of money generated by the town, but everyone's paying their equal fair share. And everyone has control to reduce that, by the way. They can take their organics out. They can recycle more. They can reduce the number of bags they're bringing and save more than what they are currently. So it's it's a it's a personal choice. Uh, through this end because I want to acknowledge our awesome transfer station operators, Rick and Rob, and say thank you to them and to the town of Kent and to the residents of this town who've really embraced it. And the positive feedback. I don't have a picture of Tiffany Carlson sitting to my right um who has been at your transfer station weekend after weekend and hours after hours. Um, I I could not have implemented this program without her and I I hope you all acknowledge her efforts. So I want to thank you, Rick and Tiffany, for making this such a successful program. And really for the for the H R A, how um you you've become an exemplar. We're still implementing this in Kent, in Newtown, and there's a lot of struggles and a lot of pushback from the residents. It was not embraced the same way that it's been embraced in Kent. And so I want to acknowledge and and just say thank you and your gratitude to your leadership as well for for hearing us and and asking the right questions and seeing that we can reduce our waste and save money um for the town of Kent. So I'm happy to answer questions. I want folks to know we have contact information if someone has questions or they're still uh confused at what we're doing here. Contact us while happy to answer questions. So. I didn't had to go through that really fast.
Yeah, it was, it was good. I it's a high notes, I think. I want to thank you both and you too. That guy over there too. I didn't wait to realize you wore the bloody hat.
All right, to me, but Tiffany was the one taking all the pictures.
But no, it the rollout was really very well done in our town. Have to give Joyce a lot of credit as well from the office, talking to people specifically about the use of the uh prior um bags during the um rollout, the initial pilot program. There was a lot of questions, can we use the bags? And when and when we said they could or when they were, we had that discussion about that. Um, thought much better that they, you know, hadn't invested in something that they thought was just going to be waste away. But yeah, you're right, the point of, and we've talked about that, that down the line, uh, people use up those bags, they're going to need more at some point. Uh, but we didn't make it a big issue uh not to or to try to push anybody to buy bags if they didn't really need it, if they thought they had enough or they wanted to see how with their with their orange bags. But that was a big part of it. But um putting everything on electronically too, putting on credit cards, getting all that going up at the transfer station as well was was a big move. I think a lot of people really appreciate it, really pay by card and it'll help as well. When folks come in and maybe they bring a wallet or didn't bring money or don't want to give Rick any money. But they'll have cards, they have bulky waste or something that needs an additional charge and so on. So yeah, I I think it went really well. Looking forward to it. I I think the only thing they asked, piece to look at is we did get a grant for this year. So, you know, adjusted for costs and 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 outlines, it's going to be a little different as we look at it in the year. But as we, to your point, and as we reduce it, that costs additional following costs, we expect it to be a little less. So um and for some of the people that we've talked about uh in the past that um on uh told it social media that questioned whether we're making money and so on or not. We're trying to make it as as close to even as we can. Um, we're probably even gonna, you know, be investing money into the program, but that's part of what the town needs to do, I think, and if you turn it.
Yeah, I mean, that's one question I have is your numbers don't talk about personnel costs. Yeah, so that's the one thing it would help us make people understand if we could, if we could lay that out for them and say, this is what it costs to run the transfer station, the entire cost. Because personnel's got to be a big part. I don't know if there's other costs that are not rolled into the figures that you just gave.
Yeah, we were just focusing on the objective, which was reducing waste and the impact of the waste. Because whether you uh increase or decrease, you still have to have personnel and it's still an overall operating cost. Happy to come back and look at that with you um as a board. And particularly, we're looking to apply for another grant and maybe improve your system even further um and reduce future costs with the offset transportation of um of organics to New Milford Farm. So happy to continue the conversation, to find ways to to improve it. I also wanted, before I forget, two other items. One, also thank Joyce because behind the scenes, it's, can you send us data? Can you send me these numbers? Um, oh, by the way, and just want to acknowledge a lot of work went into this behind the scenes by Joyce as well. And also acknowledge that there were folks who were disappointed in the in the bags itself. And we're working with Way Zero to improve the quality of the next batch of bags. If a resident receives a a box and there's any bad bags and it bring the whole box back to regular, we will replace it. Um, we'll replace the number of bags that they purchased. We're not gonna, like, if you purchase a hundred bags and you use fifty, we're going to give you fifty new bags. We're not going to give you a hundred. Um, it hurts the town in that way. But if you um find that a roll isn't good, we'll replace the roll. Uh, we want to be good on that and some of them, uh, we found the 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 drawstrings weren't working properly. Or maybe the seam in the bag was, didn't have a a full integrity. Um, and it does happen with regular trash bags. We also did an cost analysis with the town of Newtown on the cost of the bags um versus what you pay at the grocery store. Very interesting to find out that when you actually do the math, it's around the same amount of money. So depending on where you buy your your garbage bags, whether it's Costco, ShopRite, Big Y, Carol O'Leary's, I G A, et cetera. It runs between twenty and thirty cents on average. Yes, Costco can get much lower, but the average bag was, actually, we thought it was more like twenty five to twenty seven cents. And even though it runs twenty to thirty, the average is twenty five to twenty seven, and our bags cost twenty seven. No one's making money on the bags. Um, the town's not making money. Way Zero is selling the bags. And by the way, they're branded with the Kent logo on it, so there's an additional cost for that twenty seven cents. Um, but we still think that residents should get quality bags. Just wanted to make that point because it was feedback that we received.
If I may clarify one thing, um, the additional funding that the town of Kent received was not an automatic or a given. That was based on the data that you provided, your plan for permanency that you um had put before Connecticut Deep and then the execution of of how well you did on the pilot. So we could have very well not gotten any more money for them or the extension um for the end of the contract, which is October of twenty twenty five. So they they were most impressed.
Yeah, it goes to the my credibility and and support from the town too. So we appreciate all the town people that are out there that that participate in this. Nice to see how many numbers and especially the uh the organics, at least the
Yeah, that's really, I'm just really happy to see that.
It's a problem.
Yeah. Has our recycling gone up too or is it not?
Not much.
Um, okay.
Has gone up or hasn't gone up.
Most of the waste is in your organics. Your your weight's not really in your recycling and.
I just wondered if more people will recycle.
We could look at that.
Yeah.
Next report. How has?
Bots, but the wings haven't gone up that much.
So Rick, how has it been for you um to? So Rick, how has it been for you um to monitor the orange bags? That, because I knew that was probably a concern.
Monitoring parts pretty easy because you can just see people walking by them.
Yeah.
Continuing sales and stuff is takes me away from other stuff. That's getting to be less now.
There's been no consistent people trying to sneak other bags through, you know, occasionally.
Still have people bringing in other colored bags because they're trying to use them up. Tiffany, Sarah Gardner, the dumpster then. They have orange bags alone, throw half black bag in.
I I I'm sort of amazed at the number of residents that will come that don't have a full bag. And so, you know, I'll pull things out for them or I'll help educate them, oh, that's a textile, we can put that over here and we can put this over there. And look, you've got a bag to take back home. So um it's a good opportunity for us to provide public education for the residents as well.
A lot of watchdogs that come in.
Peer pressure.
Have we had anybody who's like refused to participate?
Yeah, but they haven't been thrown in. You know, they've refused to buy the bags or get rid of it somewhere else.
Yeah, okay. But our numbers haven't gone down that much, right? In terms of the number of crunches.
You're actually, at this point in the year, equal to the total number of permits you sold last year. So you're actually picking up.
Yeah.
People.
It's good.
I'm a young guy, I'm a neutral, so many towns are, you know, looking forward to this. I mean, they've stopped in, a lot of the younger families have stopped in. And and if they're unfortunate enough to have Joyce out of the office, I have to deal with it, but good luck on that machine checks out. But no, um, anything else?
I really appreciate it.
Make sure somebody gets out of there too.
And Rick, it's a good for you there.
Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you. Appreciate it. If you bring that second stop. Always busy. Good luck, thank you. Okay, um, Swift House Task Force, that's our report.
But shall I speak about the Swift House? I shall. So this is part of a part of our report. Uh, on Monday, August nineteenth, all members, um, met as a total group in a while, but all members met at the Swift House. And we talked about this report. So uh what we discovered uh was that um a questionnaire that was made by Zan went out to to the groups that were interested. Uh, and she, I don't think she had received anything as of that day. But everyone knew that they had to give their their reports in by Wednesday. And uh I was very clear at the twenty-four minute mark of the meeting, I said, okay, we need to get that in and we need a report for us for this meeting. Uh, the turnaround had to be quick. So so I was hoping that all those, all that information would be in. Then that information would be disseminated to the rest of the group by the weekend-ish, so that we can take a look at it, edit it, and then go back and have it for today. And clearly, I don't think that happened. So um so we don't have a completed report. So my apologies. Um, certainly, you know, I mean, I I was I was out of town for a little bit, um, and I think other members were as well. But we all knew that we had to get this in and very graciously, we decided to give us two more weeks with this. So that's where we stand.
And some uh groups have come in that mentioned to be uh potential, but not being specific.
Yeah.
To work those. So the Strong Society, Marge mentioned, so I mentioned that. So and I know there was, um, we do have a note from from Zan regarding the report for the board of select and meeting here. Um, I just, the question I have because I, obviously, the report I got from Zan didn't have anything in it. Um, but I want to ask, was there actual votes taken on the comments that she has in there?
No, there were no votes taken at that meeting.
Okay, so once again, the note says um is in a report, uh, which intermission, I know that we were requesting a vote from the board of select regarding, we can't request a vote if there isn't actually many vote from the task force to go forward.
Did you talk about these these two items, you applying for the National Registry?
We talked about it, yes.
Okay, was there consensus?
Of that, of going for the national history.
Yeah.
Yes.
And was there consensus on applying for a non-matching grant? To cover the costs for hiring new consultant?
We talked about it, but didn't.
If I may have the opportunity to speak. I can, I think Glenn can confirm to the rest of you that we have made between Glenn and I numerous calls to SHIPO. Many of them, we have sent emails and text messages and asked them for information about the process. It was not until after the meeting on the nineteenth that I was finally able to reach the person that I needed to speak to at SHIPO. We agreed as a committee, we did not take a vote, but we have all worked toward the effort to try to get certification without knowing what the details were. I finally reached someone who had been on vacation. It's summertime, this happens. And I finally reached the person who was responsible for processing um applications for national certification. There's been a great deal of confusion about the process. And I I finally was able to get information about that. I was told after the meeting that the town needs to make the request for an application and that um there are grants. It's important to have an architectural historian who is very knowledgeable to do the grant application. But there are grants up to twenty thousand dollars to hire a writer who is an architectural historian to um start that process. So that's a decision that needs to be made, I think, by the Board of Selectmen. Um, but all the members of the uh task force have been working in that direction and in agreement uh that this is a goal that we would like to see achieved. It's, but it's not up to us to apply, it has to come from the town. So that's why I put in my note to you that we would like you to discuss and decide whether the town is willing to go forward and whether there um you would like us to help in the process of applying for a grant to hire um an architectural historian to write the grant application.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. I'm not sure it's a clarification, but it's at least a way of an explanation. Um, the the request, though, for the task force, made very clearly was to have a report by tonight on how many groups were escorted through, showed interest, and there was some kind of a thing I, but I received from you that looks to be incomplete. Zan and I.
I can tell you what people have expressed an interest and would like to be included. I was very reticent to put together a report and and send it to you because I was not able to contact all the people on my committee who have separate vacation schedules that are away and not available and don't answer phone calls. And we haven't been able to have a follow-up meeting since the nineteenth. And I didn't want to write a report and send it without discussing and reviewing it with the rest of the task force. I'm sorry we didn't make your deadline, but I can't, I can't control other people's vacation schedules. And I have, I have, you know, plans of my own as well.
So how many groups did you have come through and which ones expressed?
The ones that are, have expressed an interest and would like very much to participate are the Kent Garden Club, the Kent Good Times Dispatch, the Kent Historical Society. The Kent Land Trust would, they have their own offices, but they'd like to be able to have summer meetings there because they don't have air conditioning. Uh, the Kent Downtown Democratic and Republican Committees and the Monday Morning Art Group. Those are the ones that have, would like very much to be able to participate. And and two of them would like to be able to possibly, the Historical Society at our last meeting, let us know that they were hiring a new executive director and they would love to be able to have a part-time office in the building, which might possibly be shared with the Kent Good Times Dispatch that would also like to be able to have a part-time office and they could work out a schedule together. But both of them need a space to function. Um, the Historical Society would like to continue to maintain their their collections in the Tolman House Building next to to the um Seven Horse. But they would like to have an office in town for their new part-time executive director. Um, so I'm gathering all that information, but I couldn't provide it to you without having another meeting with the task force, and I simply could not get everyone's schedule together. So I'm sorry for your deadline that we couldn't meet, but we've been working very hard. I have spent a lot of time with uh both SHIPO and all of these organizations. I've met them, I've walked them through the building if they weren't familiar with it. We've talked about how the space might be changed with the, you know, the um social services in the building. And I I have done all that I have been able to do in the last couple of weeks.
Glenn, did you see any correspondence from any of these groups? I mean, there are emails or something from?
That's all we're looking for.
I know.
I received, I received an email.
Excuse me, Zan, I will not allow you to come to these meetings and speak anymore. If you keep interrupting us, what we're discussing board me, we understand you're, we're quiet during your presentation, but there's a.
Don't just, you you don't need to raise your voice.
I'm not raising my voice, I'm being very pointed. This continues to happen where where we're interrupted rudely. We're we're trying to discuss and understand the whole point, what's going on. We gave you all the time to speak, all the time to re-reply, and all we get is excuses and then your interruptions. And this is something that takes us hours and every evening, every night, without ever moving forward on the issue. And that's a little bit tiring to me. And and as far as this word's concerned, um, it it isn't moving anything forward for this, for these discussions. So please, the question, have we seen any kind of emails or anything that would? Uh, I was asking some emails from these organizations saying, hey, we're interested.
I received an email from Deb Chabry today, um, and um she, yeah, yeah, so I I got that today. And I didn't add it into the folder or anything because it wasn't part of a report that we had finished. But she did email me uh interest of the Historical Society in the building.
And she's the president?
She's the president, Deb Chabry. So so I think she needs, so so she just emailed me with 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 a with huge writing. Uh, but but I think she needs the questionnaire. And and Zan, you did a good job with the questionnaire. I mean, we saw that, you know, you disseminated that with the group. Um, but um, but I think I think she's looking for that. Uh, and um, so I do have one, these are my thoughts.
I have the one from Marge that said, no, we haven't formally discussed it. It's an idea that a president, Deb Chabry, has come up with, and she is mentioning in a letter that Zan asked her to write for a new meeting, so I understand. Her new director has just started, we don't want to load her up with too much right off the bat. But Deb did bring it up when she stopped by the office this morning. I think Christine was intrigued, and that's, I think, or the. Um, I think Christine was intrigued by the idea of having a president on the town, but it's too early to commit. I like the idea as well, heading out of vacation, so on. So, yes, that it's a potential, maybe. Uh, so, okay. All right, all right, um.
Well, we all know how hard it is sometimes to get different organizations to respond. So I understand that, you know, we have our deadline. But if you can't get people to respond, it's challenging, it's it's definitely challenging.
If, okay, it is, but we, on your recommendation, when we talked about a time in July and you said we need more time, let's go through August. We went through August and now the end of August, going into September. How long do we wait? How long do we wait for specifics? And and if it's just a general idea and everybody likes, you know, maybe using it and so on, uh, we've already voted on the fact of of as soon as the uh Steve Panett comes out, that that's what we're going to approach to do for that initially. I mean, I I could say tabling this until we we actually see how this deep grant uh comes out. It has not been released yet. That's a worship piece right there. Um, but um after that, then look out, the rest of the building uh goes out. How we want to look at at interests, I mean, if it's some of this is for storage or whatever, temporary meetings, that's still going to be part of the plan, is to have a room for temporary meetings and so on. Um, full offices, we'll have to see. But again, I'm not, yeah. So is it far as going with a national level grant or a grant writing, um, you know, person for a grant writing goal and so on? I don't think we're anywhere near that. I mean, SHIPO hasn't even acted on the state of.
But the thing is, I looked up the grant today, so I I could speak knowledgeably about it. And um, we're better off going now because they only really have enough money for like twenty to thirty grants. And they say that, that that they, so as soon as they use that up, that money up, it's gone for the whole year. And that's kind of what happened to us last year. This is for this particular planning and pre-development grant, which uh the historic designation report is underneath that. So the range is from five to twenty thousand, and SHIPO keeps a pretty tight rein on this. Um, the town would have to work very closely with SHIPO on each part of the process. Like, um, you have to apply to SHIPO, you have to talk to them before you apply. They they approve the grants on a rolling basis. But there's like, you you apply one month ahead of when they're actually going to look at it. So like September sixth or an October second meeting. So it it doesn't, we would be much smarter to start the process as soon as possible. Because this is just, this is just for the National Registry. That's all this grant would be for.
So we have to go through SHIPO, who hasn't done any action on recognizing the historical.
Yeah, the Deb's have been very slow.
And we're asking them now to take on us.
But this is actually, I think, a different, a different person within the office. It's not the person that we're working with. So I don't, and hopefully that's a a better thing, but um.
And this report that we're looking for is, is this just for information purposes for us?
No, it's to apply.
It's to apply. So we need this, eat this to apply.
To apply to the National Registry.
To apply to the National.
If I may add some information.
Please.
Uh, in talking to the person who processes the national applications, she said that it needs to be a very scholarly architectural historian's approach to description of the building and what's unique about it. And and she said that they then, SHIPO reviews the national applications. And anything that they have reviewed and approved, they have never had um turned down. So they're key in this whole process. They highly recommended, as Lynn just explained to you, that we move on this as quickly as possible because it is a rolling thing and because it's funded from um some of the transfer fees taxes that are applied to real estate transfers. And there haven't been as many this year as there were during COVID. So we should apply as soon as we can if we want to have a grant. And if we, they will recommend uh architectural historians to do the grant writing that they've worked with before and that are knowledgeable and will do a good job for us. And once they've reviewed it, um, as long as it's well-written and they're, they feel very positive about the recommendation that we go ahead with this. But it's not something that we should postpone if we're serious about getting the national recognition.
What about the other parts? Is this, this historian's not going to write the entire?
Is this, this, um, historian's not going to write the entire grant? It's just, just the, um, part about the historical aspect of it?
Well, it's, it's a narrative and that, and the narrative is the most important part of the grant.
But there's a lot of other parts, like developing a budget and that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I know normally with a lot of the grants that come through town hall, the treasurer's involved with that. So is the, has the task force talked about whether or not they want to run this?
This is, uh, this is all new information to me. I only spoke to her two days ago. I've called many times, Glenn has called many times, Marge has called many times. It's not an easy process working with SHIPO.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, can, can the town apply for the National Registry even if they haven't gotten on the state one yet?
Well, yet you don't, if you are recommended to apply for the national, you don't apply for the state. It becomes part of the national, um, recommendation, uh, application. So they review and endorse and they process and, and send it on to national. And you can decide not to do national and then we could get state. But we've been highly recommended to go for national and we will get state even if we don't get national. But we can't get state independent, we can't apply for both at once. It's a package process. Cause they don't want to spend the time to do two reviews and two applications. So they roll them together.
And we have still not gotten any kind of response on the actual report from Marina?
The only, the only response we've gotten from Marina, because I bugged her about it, is her, she wanted to give, uh, an opinion on the ADA access. And I told her we'd really like to get that so that we can have completed drawings for a steep grant application, for example, and know what we're going to do in terms of the, the access. And so I forwarded that to you all as well. Um, I, you know, I finally got that response. I, I don't, I don't know what kind of report, if any, we're going to get from them. I think it's going to be rolled into the application process. The, her, I mean, I've, I have from her that they have recommended us from that, from the National, uh, Register. But I don't know what other kind of report we're going to receive from them. They, she talked about a report when she came and met with all of us.
Yeah.
But it doesn't seem to be happening.
So it's, yeah, it's part of your report here, the, the Steve Grant tone, tell us more about that. So the state hasn't released.
Correct, correct. They just have not got, releasing it. Their grants are seemingly just stacked up. They, all these organizations are still processing all the applications, stacking them, getting them going. That's across the board, including the one we did for the cybersecurity. So I think that rolling them out is they, they finish up other ones and so on. But the steep is a big one. Um, Barbara and I called and there was no, we, there's no update yet on steep, so.
So do you need anything from the Swift House Task Force from us for that application?
I don't believe so right now.
No, no, no. Not even this report?
Not this report.
Not this report?
Yeah.
So this report is for something else, not to the Steve Grant.
Correct. No, it would, yeah, for the, it was just for, again, to finish up the tasking that we had given this.
So, yeah, so for the steep grant, you don't need that?
No, we know, they, we have not seen the, I've seen previous, like I said, fourteen steep grant. I went back and looked at other ones. Um, it's pretty standard, like what do you want, ease for it? There's eight criteria that you get, which is senior housing, uh, you know, formal housing. All that stuff that you, we would write into it because again, we're looking to, to, to an inclusive piece to this. Parking, the whole idea of, of, of social services and so on. So all that enrolled in hits most of all those, uh, criteria. So it's, I think it would be a strong T grant. Again, until we actually see it come out and get, no, uh, they have up to a million dollars. I don't have to give a million dollars. I mean, there is that, we could go back and be looking at it support. Um, I might bring it to the board for any further action until I actually see a report. And then we'll have some time, then we have at least one meeting, particularly in the special. But, um, yeah, so. Then, uh, refresh my memory exactly what our task force, Swift House Task Force was for to do.
There are a few iterations, but the latest iteration was.
Well, well, the actual, the one that was voted, we added.
Well, it's changed.
Sure, it's changed, but what, what's your issue was to explore the future use of the building at, at first and then.
And to make recommendations to the board of selectmen for consideration.
And then we modified that at the end of last fiscal to talk about what we should do with the remaining funds from last fiscal, which we did with the painting and all that. Uh, and then in June, we sent this report. And then I brought up the idea of, you know, what does the Swift House Task Force do after that? And we didn't know. So, uh, so there've been a few iterations.
Okay. So what about? Zan, would you, if you had two more weeks, do you think that would be enough to get responses to the questionnaire and, and?
I mean, I've.
Writing from each of these organizations?
I have provided all of them with a questionnaire. I've not received all of them back. There are several people that are away on vacation. Um, and I, you know, I keep trying to get in touch and sending follow-up emails and text messages and please get this back to me. And I can't beat people over the head who are off on vacation. It's just.
So would two weeks be enough to get the information or no?
Well, I have to, what I'd like to do is be able to schedule a meeting and Marge is going to be away, but she has said that she could review a report and put her input. And maybe she can't be on a Zoom meeting. So that means we have to have a quorum and that means the other three of us have to be available. And, um, I'm available starting the middle of next week. I'm away now, uh, but I'm, you know, I, I can't promise to make people, other people available. I can only make myself available. But I can't write a report and send it in, it isn't reviewed by the other task force members and voted for approval. So that's where I am. I mean, well, if we don't have, I, I'm presuming that you need some of this information um, to include in a, in a steep grant. Because the more people that have an interest and need in this building, the stronger the application is. So I've been trying very hard to do that and, and I do have a list of people that have indicated definitely that they would like varied uses for the building. Some of them would like to be able to get in there now and use the building since it's vacant. But I don't know how you feel about that.
Is there any way that you could write to these people and say, this is what we verbally talked about? I'd just like to get confirmation of it. I mean, it seems like you have a, a pretty good idea about what these groups are, are interested in. And then you put it in writing and then the task force could take a look at it.
Okay, I, I could, I could try to do that. I mean, I do have a number of them, I just don't have all of them.
Well.
I haven't put it, you know, I haven't finished a report for the rest of the task force to review. I mean, I, I don't quite understand what your urgency is for this report since the steep grant hasn't even been, the application date hasn't even been announced. I'm trying my best.
Yeah, we just, we just want to wrap up this part of it, is basically.
Okay, I understand that. I'd like to wrap it up even more than you would.
I'm not sure.
I need cooperation for that.
And if you could oppress upon these groups, I mean, this is important to get this done. And if, if, you know, at the, so we as a group may have a difficult time meeting, okay? But, you know, people need to, if they have a true interest in this building, they want to be in it, they can write something. They need to write something to let us know because if they don't, if they drag their feet, that, that says something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll even, I'll even try to do you one better, Zan, for the work you have put in and, and no doubt it's difficult. But I don't even see personally that you need to have a meeting post the meeting you had to say, here's the outline of a questionnaire and here's who we're sending it to and here's what we've heard back. You just submit that, that's a start. That, that's really what we've asked up to the time of the twenty eighth. If this is what you have, it's unadorned, it's from those organizations, you're submitting it. It doesn't need an approval that someone actually sent you an email. You've, you've got the email, you've already gone through it all. So that's part of it. I don't, you know, that, that would be a big, would have been a big help before it started the meeting.
Um, I sent you a letter before the last meeting and I was criticized because I hadn't run the letter by all the members of the committee. I didn't want to do that again. I wanted everyone to see the report and I wanted to have it as complete as possible and send you something that represents all the work that we have done and not just meet an arbitrary deadline. I, I'd rather go for a complete process than something piecemeal because I can't reach people that are away on vacation.
For, in June, when we made that recommendation and we talked about the deadline, that's two months. People are on vacation for two months.
We didn't talk about this whole process in June. We met in July, we met again in August. We've, I've walked, you know, all these people through the building. Um, I've given them a, a form to fill out. I've asked them if they have any supplementary information to send it to me. I have received some and not all of them. Um, uh, you know, I'm on my way to Canada, I will be back the middle of next week.
My recommendation would be, let's have, let's give them two more weeks and hopefully they can have a more, um, coherent, um, response from all these people. Cause what we have now is not, it's not.
Well.
Um, what, what is your, um, to go back to the National Register issue, is that something that you are willing to vote on and approve so that we can get that process rolling?
Well, I, I personally want to know who's going to, who's going to shepherd the, the, uh, grant application through and, and, and the whole process of the National Registry. And we need to talk about that. Do we want the task force to do that or do we want?
Uh, yeah, I.
Uh, cause it's more than, it's more than just one, it's more than just one consultant, is my point. I mean, looking at this checklist, there's a lot, there's a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
And, um.
That's not the charge of the Swift House Task Force right now.
Correct. That's, I mean, I understand the interest and, and we've all been very supportive, I think, overall generally about trying to get, uh, both the state and national to look at it, um. This is a potential way, I'm not sure, I, I'm not ready to, to move on this motion or this request and to make a motion to do that right tonight, so. Um.
Well, I mean, we did, we did, we did. I thought that the boards expressed support for going for the National Registry. Didn't we? I thought we talked about that, about how that would be.
It's part through the SHIPO, the whole, I mean, where is SHIPO is what, my focus was, that's what we had to be on.
Yeah, that, because.
We didn't have any real connection to the national.
They didn't really explain the process, what, clearly.
Right, exactly.
They made it sound like, oh, well, we'll give you this report and then we're going to, it'll, it'll start the process to get the National Registry.
Again, to everybody's credit, I, you know, saying everyone else trying to push, uh, Marina to get more information back. It's again, you know, as we said, the whole SHIPO program got kind of waylaid by the legislature. I think that's what they both made their focus personally. I think just watching that, that's other things SHIPO had issues with, uh, following through on grants and, and applications. Maybe that's what's holding up, I don't know specifically. Uh, we haven't seen anything, heard anything.
SHIPO has only contacted Zan.
Right, right.
Well, that's because I've kept calling them, you know, it's. Glenn sent her many emails and requests and we all did and it's, it's a process that's not easy. I'm glad Glenn is there to attest to that.
Appreciate that, no? I, I recognize it and I recognize all of your, but Zan, your persistence to try to get them to cooperate and, and be open and let you know what's going on and I, I can appreciate the difficulty that, that's occurred.
I, I actually tried to use my contacts with, um, Andrew Rowan at the Eric Sloan Museum because they're in the same department of, of, uh, SHIPO. And I asked him to lean on her and she didn't even respond to him.
Okay, uh.
Right, if I could just, to Lynn's question, um, there's two parts that Zan said that the town has to apply for it. So I would think that the, number one, that would exclude the task force from being the shepherd of it. And second of all, our policy procedure manual says that Barbara, the treasurer, needs to review them and consider the validity of the grant and the requests and the, the work versus what you get and that sort of thing. So I think, I don't believe that Barbara has seen that application yet. So to that point, I think Marty's correct and you can't move on it yet until it goes through the proper process.
Well, I'm not looking for another job. I'm just trying to provide you with information and get the process moving if possible because I think it's a timely, there are timely concerns. Because when the money's gone, it's gone.
Right.
It sounds like there's a couple of pieces to this. So if, if we're amenable, we're amenable to two more wings of the Swift House Task Force to get this report done, that'll help us. But then this grant, that's outside of the task force. This has to come, it has to come from this building. How do we do that?
How do we do that?
Well, it seems like the first step would be to, uh, send the link to, um, Barbara so she could take a look and see how involved is the grant. And, um, then it's a matter of who's going to shepherd it through.
So to be clear, the grant that you're talking about is the grant to pay for the architectural historian to do the, put together the research narrative?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So we're agreeing that Barbara has to see that?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, actually personally, you said Barbara, the treasurer, first liked.
We need to vote on that or do we just say?
Yeah, it's already, it's already our policy.
Okay.
It's also, okay.
Okay.
And I'm happy to send you guys the link because I just looked it up today.
Is there a motion being made on the floor?
Do we need a motion to?
It would be, you want to motion for the extension of time or?
I think since we did make it, you know, that we, you know, they would have the task force today. The task force would, would have their report ready.
Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, give a two-week extension to the task force to have a more complete report on the use, organizations that want to use the Swift House.
Second, so that, so that means, that means by Wednesday, September eleventh.
Okay, so my understanding was that the report would be recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for consideration for future use of Swift House, including.
It would be.
It's the focus groups.
It's just the, it's just organizations.
Yeah, organizations, it's just the focus groups. Who's interested?
We have, we've talked about other aspects of it too, that we would like to include and, you know, for your consideration, so.
It's, Zan, this report is who's interested in what capacity? What, what does, what does that mean? Like we need written descriptions from these organizations. And that's got to be compiled with any additional secondary stuff and given to us by Wednesday, September eleventh.
Okay.
More especially. All there. Uh, published, one, published. Um, extension stock, okay. Motion just carried, um, so. Okay, moving on, um, PBFDM is billing, okay. Do we ask rumors? I have to start off this discussion for information related to, yeah. Relate, anything relating to the high lots and so on. Um, we've sent rumors, emails to the bar department that with the president on Tuesday morning expressing an interest in that. Clarified again what we're asking for, um, as we said, Barbara, um, and I have. As we said, Barbara, um, and I have talked to them numerous times, planning another meeting. The whole organization's leadership of the fire department and EMS um to discuss ways forward. Uh, we had asked additionally for the medic four report because we had not received any uh either information and or the town's share that was by two thousand fifteen uh Board of Selectmen of motion to have the fire department reimburse the town for the money that we arrested back in Bruce's day. And so we sent that to, you received the report yesterday or received the the breakdown yesterday. Uh, I know Barbara's not listening uh with the background information uh to the amount, it's not a satisfactory amount in our mind right now. But also regards to your specific request, we put that in again and received nothing today. So my plan forward is to send a registered certified letter requesting that and follow up with legal work to get the fire department and the leadership to give us the specifics that we are required in our agreement with the fire department, how we support them. We want to continue to support them. We need to know the data. We need to have this organization that we do support be responsive to the legislative body of the town, especially requests for how they have already, what, you know, uh what kind of calls and numbers of information and how we're using the fire department. Um, explain that to John. Uh, this is um to John Russell, the president of of K B F D. You understood and he said, I'll wait to see your letter. Okay. Seem to faze him. We we just asked him and requested and and please do it and emails and so on. So we're not formalizing the actual request. Which includes all the background information, uh medic four that we don't think we have enough of. They gave us some material, but it's a bit confusing. Yeah, very, yeah. But but also just the the data, how many calls, things like that that we've asked. It's simple background material, right, for understanding. Last time we.
So were they gonna give you data on on the number of calls where medic four was used?
That's right.
And then the the amount of money that was collected for medical.
And then the percentage. We know that they've break downs and that they that they uh deduct from the town's piece um different management costs, accounting, bookkeeping, the travel costs and understanding that, you know, that of our, the town set. Um, and we're asking for more explanation exactly what that entails. We get some of it, but it doesn't just quite add up when we were at nineteen thousand dollars two years back and now we're at five thousand and change this year.
Getting five thousand?
That's what, well, that was a twenty-three, right? And the jack check is supposed to be coming. But again, we're so far behind and the issue is the biannual reports and so on. We need to to correct that.
And are there still a a real delay and and when they get the billing? Because I know, I know there was like a six years ago, there was like a six month delay when they actually bill and actually get their.
I think that's part of the issue, but uh you're absolutely right, is that there's a delay in the billing and then there's delay in paying the bill, which we know that, you know, uh healthcare companies are notoriously slow when actually paying for it. Um, but there's a process in place, but we need to know what the delay is. Can we do anything against the town? To help, you know, improve their billing process, to support the billing process. We understand we're separate organization, but we don't really understand the complete process that we're involved with this town. And that's part of what we're asking for in this letter. So so that's how we're gonna try to move forward. I mean, it's it's interesting. I mean, we have a guy, I have a good relationship with with both um uh John and and others and Bonnie and everybody else. And we talk all the time on incidents that happen. They call on weekends and nights, what's going on. It's, you know, a great organization, you know, you remember for years. Um, dedicated people. They did a great job in in the Swift Water Rescue during the flooding a week and a half ago. Uh, but just getting this material, this admin stuff seems to be forever and.
They don't know any people doing admin.
Well, they do. When they do, so he does book.
I know they do that, but that's not.
Well, that's right. And so in that, maybe that's something that needs to be looked at. We all talk about having to 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 more professionalize the process. If we're leaving money on the table and we're leaving time away from it and and delaying it and having business side, if you don't bill right away when you get it, then like or or it happens to slip through or things aren't connected. And that's the part that you know, we just need to understand the process, understand what they're going through. And so I can really, I can really come to the conclusion, talk to Barbara and talk to you um pretty much John a a lot lately. Um, although um Alan Galloway's also been involved with some of those in our discussions in the middle of the night, you know, after or something. Still looking for this hour again. And then we send email, not respond, not even an acknowledgement email. So I figured this is. It's not contentious, it's just official. It's just trying, we're trying to, so I know, you know. I get a little loud sometimes, but this is trying to be professional and just straightforward because it's telling us, you know, we need to do that for our budgeting and our own uh you know, treasure support. So nowhere are we going to go again, how much that, you know, the costs are. Where we know that the the fire department did approve a new EMS staffing contract.
Yeah.
Um, we did get, and we got an FOI from the previous company asking what our involvement was, which was nothing. Um, and they asked for a copy of the contract that we had, which we did, and we have no other emails discussing that. We did have a verbal discussion, but that's not part of that FOI. They just wanted to know you know, what we we had as far as a new company that was hired. And that was done, I think, as we discussed during our budgeting process. Wasn't really informed of that. We weren't really brought into that discussion. There was one time when they called me and asked me, I want to turn the staffing meeting. I didn't understand what that was on Sunday. And I understand that the fire department meets when they can, they'll be have jobs and calls and so on, but I didn't understand that. That was the only time they ever contacted me about the new staffing contract that they went to for many different reasons. I'm assuming mostly really valid to why they thought the company they had that was now done, the contract was was now in the interim time that they wanted to move on to do it. But they never brought that to us during our budget. To say we're looking at a significant tens of thousands of dollars more, which now we don't have any budget to 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 cover.
Do you guys, did they finally give you guys the contract?
Yeah, we did finally get the contract. Yeah, we, a couple, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, right? A week and a half ago? Are are you on there, Barbara? Barbara?
Yeah, I got it. It was a couple of weeks ago.
It's a couple of months ago. And in July, I think, then July, around then or maybe first of August. So, you know, and we've looked at it, but you know, the money is significant, it's the money and the costs are are gonna probably entail them coming to the town, I assume, was they decide to cover the costs themselves. I don't know that. And I guess figure that as a corporation or the EMS side, what they wanted to do, so. But uh, you know, we don't have, you know, it's not like five thousand. We can adjust some budgetary. It's just significant.
And they didn't, they never gave a heads up.
Never gave us a real heads up, or brought us into the understanding that they were negotiating for for whatever valid reasons, you know, they wanted to go forward. But it would entail an increase to what we had planned. Remember, we went from around two hundred eighty thousand to what we assume this year based on increasing numbers and percentages that we went to three twenty, right? So we're gonna try to be as straightforward and fully funded as as possible instead of asking for additional funding, which they've been doing, you know, previous company or company. So that's, so that's the kind of thing that we're just trying to increase our communication and formalize it because it's going to be getting uh as far ahead as we'd like to. Just, you know, phone calls, emails, visits and so on. So that's kind of, but I wanted to make sure um it's EMS billing, but also the update to your request specifically, and it will be in the, and you'll get a copy of that.
And
But.
High watch isn't giving, they they've given that money, you know. They gave like, they've got.
Well, they got, we got the, there was a
Did you get the second part?
We got the whole amount this year. Uh, this year was about nineteen, it wasn't full thirty. I remember the first year was reduced about based on costs, some other costs, I think. Their legal costs maybe or something, but but it was nineteen and the rest of these thirty thousand for the rest of the next two years with renewable option yet. So yeah, we have, and received it, you know. Yeah, all of the other uh schools and so on that participating are all have all paid up. I don't think we're, as far as all that goes, uh, we're, we're everything.
Is Barbara doing it or not?
Yeah. She is. It's been a while. So. So. I mean, that's where we are. That's where I think we need to to go forward. So. Okay, um. That's all we have on our old business.
Our she's the election day.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, election day, no, it's good. Election people, so. All right, you guys all saw that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty brief.
Pretty brief, right. Uh, June, June seven, two thousand six, one, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, I remember the meeting.
Well, yeah, the uh obviously, uh, there was some concern at some point that there might be a election year going on and it just reduced the amount of potential I don't know, say electioneering during primaries and others. Um, but just looking at the number of days we have for early voting, it kind of takes that out of the primary piece of the day. It's more focused on the party. Um, I still think the general elections, municipal or or national elections all should be a day off and that house of the building be closed and it tends to, I would say, bigger uh effect on town. Uh, until we can figure out how we do a secondary thing and that's part of what we're looking at. Community house, um, to look at at a building of uh the connectivity fiber and so on, so we can bring the C P R S, the voting software, voting line into community houses as a backup alternate site. Potentially, it's there and then, you know, it's it's off the town hall and they, you know, include anything. But right now, I think we we can just or my recommendation, I'll make a motion here, but it is just to uh to move this to where it's only, our town is only closed, so um having said that, um, we uh.
It's only closed for what? Finish your thought.
Yeah, well, the wish only to close town hall at all um general and municipal elections. Take this even smaller. Take out the whole idea of primaries, that we don't close town hall.
We have to, but we have to close for election day?
We do not have to close, but until, I'm just saying, until we can move all our elections to someplace that doesn't allow people having to come in and out, um, you know, your offices being open, um, you know. If we do that, people would do have to come in and and be in their office. And if they're running more, that's a problem. Then we have to let people come off if they're in an election, right? Is there a candidate? If I was like running again or something, I couldn't come into the office that day, but uh others could come into the office that day because it could be run. Uh, we've kind of done that where we closed the town, the town hall during the general, the actual voting, general.
Yeah, I know. So this building, I remember this building was built. It was actually built so town hall would not have to be closed during election day. And then all of a sudden, you know, Karen Chase comes forward and says, we can't do this anymore.
Well. Listen, I'm okay. I mean, if we want to not, I just want to do away with the whole thing and open it up, that's fine. The only issue, but okay, just to to follow through the issue of people being around or maybe running in seventy-five feet and so on. Um, if an R O B is running you know, though it's 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 party basis, it's not general, but they do vote on it. Um, they can't be in the building. Because seventy-five foot rule.
But they have to be.
Exactly.
And this, this year is the year we're voting.
In town clerk, same thing has to be in here. So they can be here in their official duties if the rest of the building is closed, or they could anytime if it's open as well. So really, if you guys uh want, if you think the gag was just open the town hall. Okay, I just want to do away with the primary because we've surprised a couple of times where also we're closed on the primary. Uh, you know.
Did you talk to Teresa about? And does she have an opinion?
General election, she understands the old uh early voting thing, uh, but the early voting thing was also general election, but at the pri, at least we can do it in primary. If more than voting, we don't know how the early voting is going to go with the general election in this fall, in November. Um. But again, you're right, if, you know, if you if you extended from what we're looking at, when including a primary, we have five days where everybody's in it out, working during election. If we can, but that was also because the elected area was up in the office, the R O B office where they come through. If they only come in here, if we keep everyone up there except for absentee ballots and others that have to come to the R O B's office the same day voting, uh, you know, absentee ballots, anniversary day voting, they have to come up to the office uh and and resign it there. So again, I mean.
But what's the difference between election day and early voting days? You know, what is the difference? Is there a difference?
Only in in location and format, because all the, you know, the general days, the actual day, uh, November seventh, whatever it is.
Issue the third.
Yeah, it's gonna be here in the in this building except for other areas, but um, yeah, honestly, no. If you really look at it, no. Because it's early voting, it's same thing. We're gonna be working, we're not shutting down.
For fourteen days, they're gonna be able to vote. They're not gonna shut down during those fourteen days.
Yeah. But whatever, yeah, no playoffs, but at least at least eliminate the surprise in June and in August primaries that we didn't, you know, we shut down that. So, um, but yeah, I mean, if.
I just, it annoys me because it's like, this building was built specifically designed so it wouldn't have to be shut down.
And what was, what happened at this, at this time? So what was the argument?
It was the, what he was just saying is it, if somebody is in a, you know, running for a municipal election and their office is in this building. Then somebody could be walking by their office and maybe get influenced.
Right, and that was the argument that where this came from, okay. So, okay. So I said, at least I want to take this as a primary. Open up to the general, it's same kind of function, um, change, I guess. We really, apply it across the board, then we we open up.
You know, they've gotten affordable to use the registered voter's office for early voting. So people are gonna be walking by other offices. I mean, definitely, this is, this year is not a municipal election, but seems something to me.
This is something we have to do right now.
I wanted to do, get it done before we start getting into the planning for, so everybody knows we can publish this. Uh, this is a perfect opportunity. Yeah, especially before we get into September, then it's in September, I think. And we, something happens or whatever, just thought the agenda looks like it could handle it, you know, what's it gonna take us for?
But we don't have any more primaries. You're, you you were wanting to do it.
Well, but I didn't, yeah, I wasn't gonna try to call a special meeting and just, you know, cut the primaries out. I said, because people most people, yeah, it's like myself, you know, didn't know it was a day off. I mean, they forgot it was a day off. Uh, you know, but they had, it was closed and that, so we had, we closed those days. I went to a meeting up in in forty two. Um, or literally, excuse me. So kind of that day wasn't a day off for me because everybody else is town. Other people don't have, I did ask other uh municipal officials, you know, what they did and they said, well, we moved our vote. Or, you know, we we shut up part, we can shut up part of the building. There's a different way, like in New Town, it's a whole different uh area that they go to, so it doesn't really affect it. I gotta know, I just, I just remember, you know, when I was, when I was running, we were running, uh, I had to go to the bathroom. And so I'm like, oh, I'm gonna go to the town hall. I got up here and it's like, oh, I had, you know, it was like, do you two not? But I'm just saying, you know, again. Whatever. It's just, um. But one, see, we're open, we're open. There's no state requirement to close on election day, any of election days. Just saying, I'm just doing, just saying, we're rescinding this motion and. So we'd like to do. Well, you know, the other part of the, of the election day, I know it's early voting, I don't know how that's gonna happen in the hospitals. Anyway, we never had that problem before. We do, you know, municipal elections was closed and nobody came near it, except use the town, I mean, town halls, except for those individuals that had to run. So that was fine, but now we're early voting and but there's no primary for us, so um as far as municipal goes, there's no threat that we have to close down in three days. Except for actual election day, but then you know, there's this, I had talked to to Garland and the town clerk's role as early voter, absentee ballots, it's not been introduced this year, but it might get used, which throws a whole other the whole thing is like, it did to, basically, I think it's going towards, you know, the opening of all elections and really opening up to people in that, um. Which, yeah, I think it's a good thing. Effect us, be less people early voting, there are more people just putting in a paper ballot, putting, it might be, it might be easier to throw in the the black box out front. We don't, you know, see. It's really looking at the year coming, you know. Because right now, this doesn't affect for November. So either wipe it out for November general election, we can relook it, we can do that and say we'll stay open for this election, this general, municipal. And then if we hear something else, see how it goes, and then we can turn around and say and revisit it. If we hear something else, see how it goes, and then we can turn around and say and revisit it, you know, next. Next spring or whatever, as we get anything rolling around. I mean, yeah, I'm I'm willing to say let's uh suspend the uh motion to close the whole election day.
I think we need to rescind it.
Rescind it, yes.
Yeah.
Rescind. Uh, we we crank up the percentage of time.
Be sending the whole motion?
I'll make a motion to rescind the uh. I'll make a motion to rescind the motion made uh June seventh, two thousand sixteen. Saying that uh town hall will close on election day at all primaries. Rescind that.
Second.
General. Our discussion. The decision will be that that we will be open, town hall will be open during election day, there will be that, there will not be a jail issue. That's intent.
Well, very helpful.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the question.
Sorry.
So before, so how how old is this building again? So before two thousand sixteen?
Ninety eight nine.
So from eighty nine to two thousand sixteen, this was open for election day?
I remember. Okay.
So for the majority of the life of this building? Opened. State.
Yeah.
That's right.
Different, I mean, the the world, yeah.
Okay, so what we're what we're proposing here isn't too weird. It's there's precedent.
Okay. Say that. Like, some states have the election day office as a state holiday or. There's no national holiday for. The states decide somehow.
Do you know what local towns are sized and closed? Like, do we have any idea?
You know, it depends on where they go.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so. I, not any, but I don't do. Yeah, we didn't talk, we got primaries specifically because that's what we asked.
Do you have any questions?
Such as?
Sure. Those stories. I want to choose your.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, that's all, that's good. Did you want to say, I'll just give you, I'll see if you guys can answer.
I can run a call if you want.
I'm okay, I'm okay, thanks. You can revisit, like I said, revisit right now, okay. With the early election and so on. See. It's not as necessary as it used to be, and like you said, down the line, if we can actually move elections to. Another facility outside of the town hall and it's. As well, unless something else comes up to to actually declare it. But I don't think they're gonna do that now. And if they do. Uh, open up uh absentee ballots. Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right, motion rescind is. One second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh. All right, so there's a trooper report, I saw that, she's doing well. Vicky. It's like in the old distance. I saw that. Well, now. Um. One fire, I wouldn't know again. Just active as zero, which is fifteen. Um, traffic accidents, not at that point. I don't have any more to talk about trafficking or unfortunate, except for my report, but getting there. Um, verbally non-remission, well. After the report, there was a couple of other papers.
Oh, I saw that.
Ken Ray did assist a ton of that. But uh, still the patrol team.
Did she find out who didn't?
No, you know, I, you know, I'm still throwing things out to the, you know, there are. Especially people running around today.
I was pleased to see her at Penn Center School and.
Yeah, buddy, thanks, Teresa, I actually sat with Kofi uh. Tuesday afterwards, um, and there was, was like the other trooper, he's been on twelve one, he's out in the milk for his also the motorcycle. Uh, trooper that you see around here, that he was there with a brand new trainee at graduate academy, was on probation, I guess. He was there as well, so it's really to get coffee, uh, for your top, it's great to sign about that work here. Uh, interesting to this, uh, young trooper, trooper. But but um, several rocks and that was. Feel, so excited about being a trooper above up in this area, he'll be again putting on the troll one once he gets his. Wings, whatever, when he gets his probation time off, sort of training, but yeah, so. Again, it was nice to see, it's great to see troopers sitting eating breakfast, John Villager. As you go, people's going down.
Uh, I was going for a walk this morning, it's seven ten, I was by the gas station and I believe it was Vicky, she pulls over.
Yeah.
Like scum, it was seven ten. Wow, starting.
Well, it's, it was a talk, you know, trying to make sure that that the presence was there before people started picking up speed, before kids start walking and buses come or whatever. So, uh, yeah, she's she's really agile.
She was great in sidewalk sales days too, there was a big eighteen wheeler that nearly took away that that woman's car right there, get that out, but uh, but yes, she was each presence there.
But yeah, we'll make sure it's not, it's not either.
Has she talked to you about the handicap parking spot on Main Street?
Bring that up.
Yes.
I like that one, yes.
She's talking about, so I'm still listening to that.
Yeah, um. We can talk to, we had a long discussion about that, we had many discussions about that. Yep, three questions about what it takes to do handicap on seven, that's a that's a poor. But, um, if you want to, you want to talk to Rick and then.
We, uh. Issue with anywhere that we put on, we're gonna have to take the curb now. Lower the sidewalk, so that means. redoing the sidewalking where we decided to put handicap spots.
Seven.
The one that's been there all these years has always had a curb in front of it, so it's never really been a. Proved handicap spot, because. Even if there's a curb in there, somebody's got to park it way out the road, let somebody get out of the car and then wheel down to the end of the curbing, to be able to get up on sidewalks. So, plus you have. If we had wider. Non-travel lanes. The one where the white fog line is. Then we could do it without removing curb. Yeah. So I'm gonna talk to the engineers and see if we can incorporate it. Build the new sidewalks. While contractors here will decide where to put a couple of spots. Redo the sidewalk at the same time. Instead of trying to rip it up separately.
Yeah, I, I had a same question, do do we have to have?
Yeah.
Can you camp, you know? At M seven, we don't have, because it's a linear parking, it's not like. Where we would take two spots and pull it, we don't have two spots side to side. Yes, or part of what we're saying, they're gonna have to move over. You have to give it to the panik person time to get out, wheelchair, he's gonna be hanging out in the traffic unless we take away sideline, and then that's. So the construction and 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 reconfiguration of of apartment area on linearly up seven. Parallel to the road, uh. Just isn't gonna work, you're right, that that was one of those put up, I think, um, because the. State put one up, it's not forcible, it's not functional, if you actually look at it, there's. Where I.
I know.
Uh, but um, as we were talking about that, we're gonna look to see if we can't use the. We can, I think influence the new sidewalk, actually puts them around the corner. Um, in Main Street, petition, Main Street, so with the crosswalk, I mean. There's some issues, but again, it's. Again, the businesses don't count. The state road has their parking, so businesses have to have a parking in it, require to have a, yeah, a. Handicap to the law limit. Which we know some do, some don't, because businesses don't always have parking associated to it, right? Bars, computer garden, where you. Um, the town center and others have those parking spaces. So there are parking spaces available, library, I know we've just, we discussed it, we tried to look at potential putting handicap spaces. Near in or in front of the library or use some of that. What might be a curb area to go in there and. It can't be, it can't be approved that way. Fortunately, because of the fact that we can't double up on the space, so we have safe entrance and exit tunnel sites and access in there. Uh, and libraries talked about using. Kent Schools Parking Area is part of the the parking against the old side area, you have their side, so. That's the agreement that they're working out, um, so I I think. Handling some of these issues of parking, but yeah, so um, we're kind of stuck with the linear, but again, we can't. Well, it's an answer, it's not a great answer.
Yeah, but I wish they'd get rid of that.
Yeah, well, that's it, that's just to get off.
Yeah, I will point it to get off.
Well, what we'd like to do eventually, because there is one, we can block off. Fortunately, that's what. I think we just need to to measure it and talk to town, because we can't do it ourselves.
Right, yeah, it's a test.
And. Yeah, there's some people that hang up, and then I call them. But yeah, but we'll keep working on that, we could just still stay, we're gonna take it to the side, that is, yeah, we don't. Don't think we're frustrating people.
Yeah.
Okay, um, reports. You got another like question or?
No, yeah, so uh, so what's done?
Yeah.
I'm already done, a question about campers at the visitor center, so part of my wandering about this morning, watching people over. There were two gentlemen camping at the visitor center, so I kind of walked past them and went home. And so it's like, you know, is there a sign or something, there should be a sign, which there is, no, or no. You know, it's 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 behind, you know, the shower wall there, and they were going on, actually, by the time I got back, they, they, they were probably like twenty minutes. But my question is, you know, does that happen often? Who chases them away? Do I? Do I, as a selectman, ask questions and report to Vicky? What happens if people camp there illegally on our property, correct?
Well, they're they're noticed, we, yeah, Vicky would be called, Vicky force call, yeah, and we have that no camping. Or, you know, every now and then I'll get a call from someone who's got a camper or something, they ask to park in here, um, in town hall, because we do allow people to park here. Uh, we extend that to folks with some different organizations around town, campers, even a couple of people from Kent School. Who need a place to park, uh, we may allow it as long as it's on the far, say, south side. It really has an interfering in the parking during events that we had, we just had one this past weekend, uh, of the. Race for a cure, a race for a rehab happening, I watched something about that, we put four jobs up, which they did right away. In the back and haven't gone for six anymore. So, um, yeah, but. You know, we haven't, I haven't really seen a lot of abuse of that, I don't know, there was something that I've.
I haven't either, I've actually had to say that I talk, I've talked about Hiker all the time, I mean, I'm always about coming by there, and I've had great conversations with them, tell them stories. On the trail, uh, but in this case, the smell, I can see too, so uh, so that's why I just put this in, and then I just. Put the.
Throw it out.
Uh, so, um, okay, so I I mean, just, yeah, so selectmen, I'll be, I'll say, by the way, this, so I know you can't, you can't, but again, if there's any issue, just. And if someone abuses.
Think of you here, yeah, that's, that's good, most of the key job, okay, and and, yeah, so there. All right, that relationship, that's all I got, sorry, that was pretty easy. Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. So, uh. The broadband committee took what you guys told us about, you know. How to properly operate with subcommittees and all that, um, but I did talk with an attorney from the F O I. But I didn't. And so I I brought the options back to the broadband committee and they decided that it would just be as easy to have people. Who want to help us with communication, just report back to the full committee. So, um, we dodged that bullet, um. But, um, we are looking. Forward to, um. Communicating with people and trying to, um, educate them about why fiber optic high-speed broadband is important. Because there's not a general understanding of that, right? Um, they, you're kind of like, well, you know, what we have now is great, but you're not thinking about the future, um. And I just realized I didn't, I wrote something up to put in your newsletter and I forgot to send it to you. Okay, I'll send it to.
It's not the end of the business.
Um, and we are still trying to meet with frontier and Spireum, um. To find out what their future plans are, um. And then the park and rec, um, we actually had a bylaws committee meeting, um. Yesterday. And so that'll be going to the the full commission in September. Um, and just to update you guys, because I wrote this before we'd have our meeting, um. The subcommittee is recommending that the third selectman be a. Non-voting member of the commission. And the other things that I. Talked to them about was, should the park and rec commission members be elected on a ballot? And the three, the three members that are, you had three other members of the subcommittee did not think that that was a good idea. I think it's a pretty good idea. So we'll see what the full commission thinks, um, but. I think that there's some validity to, um. Having them be accountable to the voters, you know, and just like. I mean, they asked me which are the other, and please correct me if I was wrong, but I, they asked me which are the other appointed. Um, commissions, and I said, well, it's pretty much historic district commission, conservation commission, and in the last. Is there anybody else's choice or is that it?
That's that's just appointed.
Appointed members. Because even though the park and rec commission members are elected at a town meeting. They're more like a elected, more like appointed members, because they're.
Yeah, appointed by the committee of the whole, let me say.
I, I.
Yeah.
You know, it's pretty good to my good side, I can't.
So anyway, um. We'll see, we'll see what the commission thinks, um. But I I wanted to bring that up to see, you know, you guys could be thinking about that. Because we're gonna have to change the ordinance anyway.
Right, exactly.
So we might as well make as many changes as we need to at one time, um, I. It was an interesting discussion about the third selectman, I tried not to be, I tried to let them discuss it rather than try to influence them. But personally, I think. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me why you'd want a third selectman who can't vote. Because why go to the meetings? If you can't vote, you can't, you you really, if you can't vote, you really shouldn't be trying to influence any kind of. Discussion, you just be sitting there and listening. And that seems like kind of a wasted job.
That discussion, yeah. Right, now, in the, looking to the actual intent back in the day when the commission came, when the park ran into a director. There was some thought that a select person on the board could help move it forward, but right, that was kind of the intent, I think, of the third selectman.
There's some kind of overseer, you know?
So I'm saying, you know, oversight, you help them get organized, but now, like, will we pass that? I mean. I don't know, it's good for me to see what the commission says, but yeah.
I don't, I don't really see, I don't, I mean, I, even like if it wasn't me. I mean, I think that the best part is, I think it gives selectmen. A lot of in in, you know, a lot of knowledge about.
Yeah.
About what's happening.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, the director could be.
Oh, yeah, you can, but that's the point is, yeah, I mean.
It doesn't have to be.
He sent me, he sends me notes, obviously, and that kind of stuff, uh, what's going on, we see him every day, and he's very helpful, so. And we want, it's, everything's on the council, I mean, they do a good job, the commission does a good job, I mean, they're spending a lot of time generally. So, yeah, how much, right, how much more benefit is it? To have a, not especially in authority. You know, that might be more of them, all right, we'll see how the commission says it, I'm sure, taking that up here, so. Okay.
Um. Oh, and there, I guess the. Uh, under the parks, they're, they decided to allow draws under issues with with some restrictions. And they're putting for, they've sent out an R F P about resourcing the tennis courts.
So that's.
So a quick turnaround, it's like due by September twenty first and then the work done by November fifteenth.
Well, I understand that you mentioned that, I asked him, I said, oh, that was pretty, quite, he's, he's showing, he already got a couple of companies that reach contact, that's what they're. I'm asking, so, well, hopefully, it's the end of the year too, I mean, a lot of folks, especially tennis and other things at the beginning of the year. And maybe they do it at the end as well, but, you know. But it's good that they, they have that.
I feel like we just filled those courts.
Yeah, I've never met one of them for a year, but someone.
Anyway, those are my biggies.
Just just to say that pickleball, huge, I'm a huge fan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can get you out there.
That's okay, that's okay, I'd rather be here, but uh, but next week, I'll be there, but uh, but I mean, it's been been nice to meet up people, to just talk about the.
Yeah.
About the town. It's been great, I gotta say, I mean, a whole, it's like a whole social gap.
Yeah.
I have to say, like, with the commission, Matt has his his constant contact reports out, and the things he sends out are pretty inventive. And and inclusive, I mean, it's just, there's a ton of stuff. Which a lot of things, but it seems to have a good plan to it. Um, I did ask him for just a quick note on the summer, summer program camp, so I can send a note, thanks, I'll get away. And, um, eighty percent of the the. Kids that were around, they showed, were all kept, and there's still twenty, so twenty percent came from desserts or outside, whatever, that's pretty darn good, I think. Just like sixty was the, the numbers he had before, it was only about sixty percent. So maybe that means we're getting more children as well, or does the numbers seem to be?
Well, they, just remember, they did expand the number of slots and they also expanded. Well, they did, remember, they did expand the number of slots, and they also expanded the day, so that might have helped working parents.
Absolutely, exactly, that'll be, yeah, that's a good point.
And Matt's great, I mean, he's, he's energy, I mean, he's talking to everybody, he's, I mean, he's, he's great.
Every Monday when he tells me how many you want to decline. I'm not surprised, just here. So don't talk about it, I'm serious. All right, um, okay, anything else?
Nope.
Quickly run through everything, traffic control, we're, I think, the final throws, we're getting the data, and we'll move forward with that. Tomorrow, I actually have a meeting to talk about the follow-up on the processing end of the, you know, the speaker, so. We've already kind of gone on, not necessarily about how they actually collect the, the data, but then once we get it, what are we doing? And, and, and got some preliminary cost report, about twenty-four change for each camera. So for two before me, and that, but there's processing, you know, costs, and we'll have all that report, it's like, get the set of these folks and talk about what that means, so. Mercy management, we're doing good, the first thing I said is talk about moving the EOC actually back upstairs to the second floor, I think it was there, it was here years ago, but we're not giving up the EOC room right now, but. The actual connectivity, again, with the, with the jet coming in here in the town hall, we're gonna have the power, we have the connectivity, we have radio in our office right now, we monitor it all the time. And then there, there are antennas, or there were some here, we'll be able to put those back up. I think it's, it gives a little bit like a road operate, having been there at the end of June. Three people and anybody who was, or MS coming in, it was packed, and it was hot, so. And there's other reasons, we know, with, with, with new Mercy Management Director, but it's really done positive so far, we're back getting the LEOP. Local Mercy Operating Procedure Manual back up. Got some stuff online, that's good, so. A lot of that, cybersecurity grant we put in, I contacted the grant administrator in Hartford yesterday, to be great, no back, really responsive, saying, we're probably stacking thousands of grant applications, but and putting it in there, that will be taken a look at, so they expect to make, he said, our plan is to make the, or one October, so I think we have enough of them. Process, he said, move as quickly once everything's completed, so that, we didn't get that until the end of July, so they.
Going back to Mercy Management, how many, how many director applicants did you?
Two, two, but one was incomplete and then backed out. We did the, like, longer than two weeks, called it, you know, it began, so, yeah, that was the one. But had a lot of discussions about left and right runner, support and all that stuff. See.
I just have real reservations.
Well, I understand.
Based on this history at the fire department.
I understand, and that's why, partly why EOC got there. But there's also functional reasons why we can, I think, putting it here would be just as good, important to anyone, everyone else in town, if necessary. When he's in and out, and as we go across, so. Yeah, but I, I understand, I've had discussions with a, a John. Did you have a certain change, a director change, I understand, but we have another server person spent up, so. We'll watch it, I understand, I know.
It's stream in town.
But listen, I understand, I mean, I've sat across from you, I understand, but we've had some very good discussions, you understand that the position he's taking up to support, he has provided the town, where agreements and disagreements can occur, or it can occur. So, you know, yeah.
And the deputies, okay?
Yeah, both of them were very supportive, I mean, I met with them, and I met with them all together and all that kind of stuff, and they had no issues. Yeah, it's a tough thing, but I did get pressure from the state, especially after the June, our just hears Hoosier, we need to have a name. Getting from our grants and so on. Go with that, and pardon that organization, so.
Johnny's sent out the wrong name. List for you.
And, and we, we'll see, we got his all set, so we're up and running. And speaking of other grants, the. Richard voters, yeah, we said the procedures, anybody who's considering a grant needs to go to the chartering first, let's say, hey, don't run it, because we're going to buy the town and, you know, your province of town, well. Richard voter, Teresa. Heard about this for the grant, and put in for it, and actually got stopped, processing thing, called to find out what was issued, and it's, oh, okay, well, we'll push it forward, push it forward, and it was worth five thousand dollars. We didn't find out until after it was made, so this is where organization calls the C T L C, Center for Check and Civic Life. Application for a nonpartisan rural and, and non-metro election infrastructure program. Which, when you apply for it, can be applied towards helping support personnel, equipment, you know, integration, which, if we noticed beforehand, we might have influenced that towards, and getting the secondary system set up, or secondary building set up, like, for elections. But anyways, but Teresa put it in, did get it, came to me and said, hey, I got this report here, so like, what? But Teresa, I looked at it, did sign off on it, again, only to five thousand hundred, which is great, so with that, we'll go into right now, for their personnel costs and so on, and you can imagine, it's still high, there's equipment costs. So, yeah, and, and we have this organization, the C T L C, has awarded grant to Kent before in twenty twenty. So I guess in the middle of COVID, I believe it was twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty, so we worked with this organization before, it's, it's proved, I guess, across the state, so there's no issue, no experience, it's not partisan, but it's just to help the town, so the strings are formidable, requirements are almost, you know, just tell us what you're doing with it, and you kind of think of that, so. But that's a positive thing, easily. I think it should be tenant, good talk about some of the search yet, just the cooperative, opening up a better cooperation. Ten to fifty commission, doing well, we'll be hearing more from them, I think, next month, when the plan actually will come forward to work out, they seem to have a pretty good thing. C N Fiber, really quick, November is the time I actually am coming here, I don't know if I'll get in in time for the election. So C B R S will probably not have voting connections, necessarily voting software, and, and dedicated internet connection to the town, they're supposed to bring in, I don't know, they're they're trying to blow a hole underneath the railroad and push things underneath and not go over the top of them, that's kind of an old, I guess, but for, anyway, so.
Just come in that one?
Yeah, it's gonna come probably over from the library area, I would assume, somewhere down there, where they actually access it. Push it through and then go through the, obviously, the town center, and John Casey's, then, you know, he's actually had a meeting with them to describe exactly what they're gonna do.
Do you know what they promised you in terms of speed?
No, I don't know, I think, no, I'm not sure.
So I heard that they might have hired.
Right, the plan is to go higher, and again, that depends, I guess, on the structure and strength of the fiber, but they, I don't know, they, they had, had an old fiber buy-in, and I don't know if that's new, if that's an old, old fiber, new one that could handle a larger.
And is this costing us anything?
No, not initially, that was part of the grant that we got, and the last minute, we had to have it by December, remember, we reapplied, and we got it, and you, I think, for a read, put it in, so, well, that cost is sitting right now.
Right now?
Yeah, well, it's, it's in received UConn's thing, so I'm sure they'll find a way to charge us some, some function money. The, the cost will be in, with the whole thing, with the, the whole cyber backbone, we can, we have that gov, thanks to Joyce for that, using her credit card. Before we had the town credit card, we, we did get the dot gov application in and approved. So there will be a training transition and a transition of all the web or emails, and we'll go to dot gov from dot org. So we'll have to come up with a different gaming convention, all that, there'll be a time when we have both, so transition across. But then there's, along with that, and along with, there'll be training and education programs, exercises that we have to do, so there'll be a time when you might be told the next three years, you're gonna get into, you know, an email or so, see what you do, and then report this, and you know, if you open it up and it's bad waters or something else, maybe it doesn't look good, so there'll be all that kind of stuff, so there's a bunch of stuff that'll have to go with that. We do need, and part of our application was to upgrade our server, we will need to do that regardless, but, and that was before we found out that November was the time. And but C N told us, we should have the fiber here, so, but there's a piece of equipment we're gonna have to upgrade, that's part of the grant.
Who is using the server?
Uh, well, well, C B R S has, it has it, the whole, every, the whole town hall functions do it, we have all the applications across it for the permitting. Everything else we have it for, cloud. Some of this cloud base, but it still has, you know, goes through the server to get to the cloud, you have to be able to bring it in across the computer, so you can tech uses that to support everything inside, here we have, technical here, treasurer, everybody, accessory has their own, you know, different server, it just has to go through the server to be able to get to. Just have to know from the computer. Right? And, anyway, that's really kind of, in a N E B I program, they did come out and say, second phase, we'll put it anywhere, so we're sitting again to talk to them. Actually, I'm talking, I apologize, tomorrow is a N E B I discussion on electric vehicle placements, and we're working with Conservation Commission, Wendy, we're, we need this larger helping out, trying to help come up with some solutions for, you know, or some recommendations for a place.
So would we get four of them?
We'll get two, we couldn't go to four, we could, it depends on what we do, how much we want, ask for, and then what grants might find that offset the cost, it's a eighty, twenty, so twenty percent of whatever costs, unless we get additional grant, it comes to twenty percent. We're trying to discern if we can find that, there's companies that have been already bugging me, hey, we can help, we get money.
I know, I saw that come through the selectman email.
Yeah, right, yeah, so, so we're taking a look at it and see how much of that, that's what we're gonna talk with the N E B I, this is the group that's, that's you know, state kind of supporting organization that's helped build the original N E B I program for Connecticut, so. Clara Bate is turning, or tomorrow, next Wednesday, or Tuesday or Wednesday, so actually, that's how we talk to the traffic camera people, so. That's really kind of the, I think, just.
So these, does the EV stations, do they have to be on town land?
No. They can be anywhere, they, they just, it's, it's the support, so if we want to put them on town again, again, there's the whole thing of charging a certain amount, you could charge charging hour after a certain amount of time. So all that is negotiation, and that's what you have to put into your grant to get it, how are you doing, so, I think they like town properties, you know, public properties, but, you know. Non-profits, poor profits, as well as town officials can all buy, so they will do that.
So when there, you said it could be two or four, would it be within our, within the boundaries of Kent?
Right, yeah, we had to read by four, I, when there's no, because, you know, we, we looked at when it came to the lowest, or the, the farthest, like, state lines. And the original, that was all the road, if we put anywhere above there on seven, at ten o'clock at night, so we need to charge. Where do they go? Either on their own, it's kind of not, you know, might, it may be lit, it may not be, Cornwall chose not to speed at Cornwall Bridge to go across here, they don't, you had to have four at the time, now it's, it's one with two, it's one with two, I don't know. Have to check on that one, but I believe they actually opened up to anything, because the original one, she had a four, and that's when Cornwall started beginning, and we don't have private property for four. Before, against the bridge become shared, and then shared, and it was more restrictive, I think, like, gas stations are private areas. But, you know, Wendy actually looked it up and followed through, and then when we got the, the new announcement, it did say it could be, anyway, you could put it pretty much anywhere you want to. And they opened up to towns that were between, like, so originally, originally it was gonna be New Elford and then Canaan, but nowhere in between, it could go, because there wasn't any, you know, any place where people were gonna be at night, unless, if you're anybody traveling at night, you have an hour to sit around and charge your vehicle if you needed it.
So are you gonna talk to the chamber and see if any of the business owners?
Did talk to chamber, we did, the town center. Was interested, I've gotta get back with that, or get back with that once, we think tomorrow I'll find out the particulars, and then yeah, chamber had no one else at the time, except for town center and the, come on, Gary. Members within, within the Kent Town Center building area, the parking area were potentially interesting, so. So, I mean, it could be up in anybody, that's why I, I wanted to give it to Conservation Commission and say, hey, who else do you want, they've looked at mobile station, what do you do, contact? A little reluctant right now, not worried about space and all that stuff.
Exciting.
It is, you know, it's, it's, it's a first start, it's, but, yeah. Okay, so reports. Any public comment, any public left, Rick?
Public, anything else?
Anybody else, anybody out there besides us? Nobody? I think, see none, to, to adjourn into executive session, just to discuss, Scotty Coke update.
Legal update?
Legal update.
I'll make that one, too.
I'd like to, like I said, invite, Barbara, are you still here?
No, it's, no, so it's just you on the side of the class.
Okay, but you in? Well. The passion you're bringing about, so. Now come out of executive session, eight fifty, no, actually. Favor with you.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you guys.